It's cold.
All right, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Bradley Gottschall, I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this evening is a business session of the Board. They have a number of items to attend to, including, under Old Business, they will first begin the meeting with the adoption of Ordinance 2024-01, which authorizes the renewal of a cable franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania. After this, the Board under New Business will take, or actually hear a presentation, and then also adopt the Conway Track Park Master Plan. Following this, the Board will take action to adopt Resolution 2024-05, which authorizes the electronic submission of a DCNR grant, that also being for the Conway Park Development Project. After this, the Board will take action to adopt Resolution 2024-06, which authorizes the submission of a funding request to the Pennsylvania Department of Health Walk Works Program. Following that, the Board will adopt Resolution 2024-04, which again further authorizes the submission of a separate funding request, this being for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, that related to a police department matter. Then following that, the Board will take action to adopt a contract for tree cutting related to the sewer and storm sewer mini basin project in the PCBE mini basin area. Then also move to take action to award a upgrades contract for the HVAC system within the sewer operations facility. Following all of that, the Board will take action on a number of subdivision and land development items to include the improvement guarantees, and then finally, the payment of township and authority bills. And then finally, finally, hear any last announcements before making a motion to adjourn. And with all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Zumas?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before the Board meeting, the Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session, and we will not be meeting an executive session after the meeting. With that said, do I have a motion for approval of the minutes from 11624 and 2624 Business Meetings?
So moved.
If I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. At this time, we have public comment. I ask that if you are speaking under public comment, that you speak on nothing that is on the agenda. You would have the opportunity, when we get to that item on the agenda, to speak with it. Is there any public comment this evening? Yes, sir? Would ask if you could give your name and your address, please?
Victor Banks, 6551 Lighters Lane in Harrisburg. Was there something else you need me to say?
Nope, that's it. Nope, you're good.
Last time I was here, I had an opportunity to speak to the Board about a circumstance that took place days before at that time in the park of Hodges Heights. There was trucks coming and going, and I related it to you as being a weekend event, but it was actually on that Monday that that circumstance took place. Since then, I've had the opportunity to speak with Nick Nolte, the Public Works Director, through text messaging, and he said he was going to look into it. I don't know what that was to mean, that he was going to get back to me or whatever, but I wanted to say at this time, just so that it was clear, that the circumstance such as it is, the park was still inaccessible, was only accessible through one gate opening that's also used for trucks and service vehicles to enter the compost area. Be it on a Monday or whatever day the schedule is, is immaterial to me. And I think that was a concern for Mr. Nolte as to whether or not they were working on the weekend. But he wasn't as clear to me that there was a concern, excuse me, a concern for the pedestrian access way. There's no crosswalk, no blinking lights, no warning apparatus for people to access the park. So that's the principal concern. I just wanted to reemphasize it and suggest that it wasn't on the weekend, it was on a Monday, and there were four vehicles involved, and all of them were marked with the Township logo.
Okay. Brad, did you talk to Mr. Nolte about the situation from a couple weeks ago when Mr. Banks was here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So has that been taken care of? Are they coming in both ways? Are they coming in the lower? I think we're trying to answer your question.
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, with regard to the access of the site, I mean, all access is being done consistent with the Township's directives. Relative to the issue of safety of pedestrians and either flashing beacons or some sort of other pedestrian infrastructure, that's something that we could certainly take a look at. But like I said, with regard to the access of the site, it is being done consistent with Township directives. So that won't change unless directed otherwise by the Board, but we will certainly consider and further investigate the infrastructure issue.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Banks?
No, not exactly. The concern is going to be exacerbated as the spring and all the trees that have been knocked over, people are going to be well taking their waste to the recycling center. And I'm imagining, I don't have any measurement to guarantee the circumstance to happen at all, but I'm assuming that there's going to be more traffic than entering the compost center by pedestrians, people in their vehicles, and service vehicles by the Township. My concern is that there's two ways to enter that compost area. I'm not sure why the trucks can't enter the same way that pedestrians bring their waste in with their smaller vehicles and station wagons, but they're certainly not coming at a frequency that should be interrupted. But if there's going to be two parks on the same street, somewhere along that street, that right away, there has to be some traffic control. There's speed bumps that could be used, and were established on Devonshire Heights Road. There are widening of the road that could occur and create a walkway along Conway Road somewhere to make it possible for pedestrians not to have to dodge traffic as they enter one of the two park site locations, one of which you're going to talk about later today. But I think that's an issue that should be taken up, and I'd be open to discuss it with whoever at length to hopefully reach a resolution. That's the end of my statement. Thank you.
Have we done a traffic study on that road, do you know, recently?
I couldn't speak to that. I'd have to take a look at the records.
Okay. Because I know they're back at the compost just three days a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Okay. If you could, I'm talking about when people drop stuff off, starting in April, it's open, open three days a week to the public, is what I was talking about. Can we get in touch with Adam and see what we can do there, if there is anything at all?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, because of the people, you know, walking and of the traffic there?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, yeah, like I said, with regard to the infrastructure and the traffic safety, I mean, it's certainly something that we will happily do. With regard to the access of the site, unless otherwise directed by the Board, it is departmental policy. We have been accessing that site through both entrances. It's an economic decision, it's a number of other decisions that I had laid out for the Board. But so at this time, that's the access that has been decided upon. But like I said, with the traffic safety issue.
Right, just the traffic, the safety issue of them walking.
Absolutely.
Well, was there a safety component as far as having our trucks access the different entrance and not sharing the same entrance with the public?
That had never been, until Mr. Banks had brought that up to us, that hadn't been raised before as far as a member of the public. Again, I'm not sure, the last time a traffic safety study has been done, so I'm not sure if any other data has been shared with us to uncover some sort of concern there, but we'll take a look at that.
If you could just look into that with Adam? Okay. All right. Okay. Yes? Okay. We need a name and an address, please?
Anita Ash at 6632 Jordan Drive.
Can you speak into that? There we go.
Anita Ash at 6632 Jordan Drive.
Okay. Okay.
And I'm Alicia Allen. I grew up in Hodges Heights. So I have family at 6601 Jordan Drive. My mother was the daughter of Elmo Hodge Senior, who developed Hodges Heights. So we have two concerns to add on to what Victor Banks first talked about, and that is the Hodges Heights Park. I was taking people out to the park just to show the neighborhood because we just talked about it for Black History, and we have the history of Hodges Heights and how it started, and the history of how it began with the community. And my concern, two of the concerns about the park is the way it is now with access of that park entrance and the driveway, that that's not how it used to originally be. You have the locked fence at the lower end of Conway Road, and then the open park entrance. There is no fence to enclose that park on that side. And with the pavilion now moved closer to the composting side, any child, if they would step down on, now you have a platform like deck raised up, if they step down, they're right in the street. There is no blockage, no siding, nothing. And just trying to turn around in the street on Conway Road, I had difficulty trying to turn around on Fairfax to go back out. So my biggest concern, I know, like you said, not to mention what's new business coming up, but my concern is there is no sidewalks. I grew up out there, but it was never that busy, you know, in all the years as it is now. So that is my concern, is what are we doing about the park to make sure that it is enclosed? Because baseball teams have used it, you know, it's used for multiple things. But the biggest piece is with the children, and just I see the vehicles coming around that corner, going straight in, straight in, and down, and the children, there is no fence on the backside accessing to that composting. So it's a safety issue.
Okay.
And the other part?
And the other part that I'm here about is, I've been living out there almost 30, maybe 34 years, something like that. And we have never had our road paved at all. They came last year, I've called several times within the past couple years. And last year was the first year they came and they paved. They didn't pave, but they patched in different areas, and that's all they did. But being a taxpayer, all of us out there, we really feel that we need to have our development blacktopped.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Have they replaced your sewer out there yet?
As far as I know, I believe so.
But not down Jordan.
Okay. And that could be, yeah, that could be a big reason why. Because the sewer, you know, for the past 17, 18 years, is being replaced in Lower Paxton Township. So what happens is then, when they do replace the sewer, then they end up doing the roads. So what we could do is we could find out when you are up to have your sewer replaced, and then we would be able to tell you if you're in that five or 10 years where the sewer be replaced, and then the road will be repaved. Because we don't want to repave them, and then you're ending up having sewer, and then we go and tear it, you know, tear it up with everything that we've just paid, just paid for. So what was the address again?
6632 Jordan Drive.
And you're on Wellwater.
And we are on Wellwater.
Okay, well, that has nothing to do with the sewer?
Didn't think so.
Yeah. 6632.
But I have seen that they have paved Lighters Lane and tore it up, and then repaved it again. And when I talked to the gentleman from here, I can't think of his name who handles the roads, he just said it was about the money. He never said nothing about the sewer or anything like that.
Okay.
Well, it's always about the money, because they have to rank all the roads and do them by all these indicators. We have some software, we drive around, and it looks at the roads and tells us where they rank as far as how much longer they can last. So there's a whole criteria of things, and ultimately, obviously, money is one of them, because we have 200 and some miles, and so we're always having to make choices. So that's definitely part of it. Sometimes they do get, they do get a water line, and sometimes they don't coordinate properly, so you will see it torn up a couple years later. And that's what they try to avoid, but sometimes it does happen. Either something unexpected happened, or it was poor planning, or something like that. But that's what they try to avoid and try to time everything properly, so you're not doing that.
But after, my parents, 1955.
But after 30, 40 years, I mean, not to have it paved, not once.
Yeah, my street where I just moved from is 44 years old, and it's never been paved.
That sounds crazy to me.
Yeah. Well, we try to do 10 miles of roads a year, what our budget allows us to do. And like I said, we're very fortunate, you know, with the sewer replacement, that they are also helping us, you know, with paving, with paving the roads. So we only have, you know, so much money in the budget and from the liquid fuels to work with, so.
We'd love to do more. It's a common, it's one of the most common comments that I hear. It's just, you do run up against the numbers, and you can only do so much. And it is, it is, it's a common challenge for every municipality. But I know it's not, doesn't really please you to hear it, but it is.
Not since, yeah, not since that long. I mean, I just, and we all pay taxes, and we all know that our taxes out here aren't that cheap. So.
Thank you for your time.
We do really need to.
Okay. Well, we will, we'll look up and see where you at with the sewer, and have somebody get back to you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Judy Banks. I live at 6551 Lighters Lane. And I want to revisit two topics that were just discussed recently. One has to do with the safety of pedestrians going into the park, and I did hear your answer, Mr. Gottschall, regarding, the Board has made a decision to use that entrance. I'd like for the Board to reconsider that, or if that was your, or the policy, I'd like for that to be seriously reconsidered. I was walking with my daughter and her dog on a Monday afternoon around 1:00. Between 1:00 and 1:45, we were in the park area. As we entered the park, there was a large Lower Paxton, I think it was almost a backhoe, big backhoe, that came through. No warning, our backs were to the vehicle. We had to move over to the side to allow the vehicle to get through. We continued to walk the dog. Within minutes, another vehicle came through, large vehicle, came through the entrance. We were, we were still on the asphalt at that point, and had to again move over for this vehicle to come through. While we were at the park, two other vehicles exited the park from the compost area, or from the area behind the gate, I'll say. One was a very, very large truck. They were moving quickly. We, I took a video of the truck. I took a video of the truck, because the truck was moving quickly. Moments after that, the vehicle that came in, the first vehicle that came in, came out again. And again, you know, by then, we were on the grass, but that was four vehicles moving back and forth by then. There was another backhoe sitting at the gate. And as we were leaving, that one was behind us. And I took a video of that one. So there's a safety issue. This is a park that is used by the community. Children, families, and movement coming into the park is, you know, you're at risk for a number of reasons. One, unexpected vehicles like trucks coming through, also because of that curve. People don't see you, you don't see them. So there's a safety issue. And so I'm asking that you reconsider that policy. There is, there is a large entrance at the bottom of Conway where those trucks can enter into the area they need to do their work. I'm not saying they're not doing work, but there's a safer way to access that area. And what we're requesting, I'm requesting, is that you take action to make the citizens of Lower Paxton in that community safe.
Okay.
So the second issue I wanted to raise, again, it's been discussed, the Hodges Heights Park. As you know, it's a historic community. The Ash family just talked about briefly why it is, and has history of it. In August of 2023, our community met with the Parks and Rec Committee. We had a very good meeting with them. Thank you. We had a very good meeting with them. At that meeting, we got a very good understanding of why Hodges Heights Park cannot have any major development on it. We understand about the soil. We were then presented a proposed new plan for the park. And that plan included what was termed passive development. And what we would like to see and continue talking about and take, and having the Township take action on, because we just don't want to talk about the planning. It's been talked about for a long time. But we want to see action taken on some passive development in Hodges Heights Park. And there was a list of possibilities that would accommodate the soil, which can accommodate any major development, but certainly can accommodate some passive development. So we would like to see some action on that. I understand about the new park, that's great. But this is an existing park that is a Lower Paxton park, it's in the community, and we would like to be able to continue using it and continue having a nice place for us to visit, because it's in our community, and we value it. And we value our community, and we value living in Lower Paxton Township. So thank you for.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Johnson. I reside at 6705 Conway Road. And I do have two comments, but before that, I'd like to preface my comments with, I'd like to thank our armed forces for protecting our rights, keeping us safe here in the United States. I'd also like to thank the local police department in Lower Paxton Township for the dangerous job they have in protecting our rights, and at the same time, with respecting our rights as citizens. I think they do a very good job. Thirdly, I'd like to say thank you, the Board, for the time, for giving of your time to advocate on our behalf. And the comments that I have this evening, I'd like to build on, there's probably not much more I can have, but from the Hodges Heights community, the comments that were made about the park, I'd like to build on that just a little bit. I do understand that part of the park is built over the compost site, and there has been, over the years, some settlement. But what I can say is, I've been out here for 30 some years, and the settlement has very much slowed. And I think it's time that, I'm not sure the last time, they've actually repaved the basketball courts, but I do see children up there every day playing on the courts. We don't, you know, we don't have, the lines aren't drawn. I think it would be beneficial if they could repave the park, reset the goalposts at the proper heights. The shrinkage, if it shrinks again in another 30 years, and there's some settlement, I don't think it would be that much. And I think it would certainly help to improve the park and bring more children to the park. Secondly, along the park where the fence is for the composting site, I think it would be beneficial if they could put some type of shrub, so when we're at the park, we don't see the compost site, if that's possible. The second concern I have is where I live, the majority of the composting happens right behind my house. And I have two issues, too. I still have the noise issue, I live through it, I tolerate it. I keep my windows closed in the house. I'm fortunate that I can work from home, but I have to keep my windows down because of the noise that I'm on phone calls. When the trucks go through there, if that road was paved a little bit better, as they go through there, their tailgates bang, and it just ricochets. The noise is so loud, it just goes right through the home. And, you know, it's been that way for years. When they're grinding, it's loud, you know, I tolerate it till it's done. I will say, they've done a much better job with getting in, getting the grinding done in a couple hours. And then it tends to be quiet again. But again, at the back of our homes, when I sit on my. again. But again, at the back of our homes, when I sit on my back porch, I see big yellow construction equipment. And again, on the other side of the fence where that road comes down, I'm asking again, if there's any way they could put some type of small shrubs, some type of, something that would grow up, small pines, arborvitae, something that would grow up to block the view of the compost site, because evidently it's not going away. But again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Mr. Miller?
William Miller, forty-three eleven Cresview Road, Lower Paxton. I'm just going to piggyback off of what Victor said, as you, and it's obvious you've got some planning to do now from all that's been said. But the Greenway Committee, which Victor and I are members, trying to get a, a way down to the new, to the new area, to the new park, to, you're, that, I'm hoping you can incorporate that into all this plan con process to figure this out. So, oh, we need a walkway to the park. Well, we already did this. It's bigger than that. People need a safe way from Hodges Heights to go down to the park, and, you know, we're, we're working to connect all these, obviously, the committee. But this just, hearing all this, and, you know, obviously, you need for a park entrance and a park for a commercial entrance, and, but there's, there was talk about bringing a walkway around. So, there's been a lot of ideas shooting around, so probably Jim Seidler's the best person to talk to, you know, and Parks and Rec. See, but I don't know what the other committees are doing, but it might save some time if all their thoughts were, you know, compiled, and all the goals met in one, paying one engineer, engineers to do that at one time. That's my thought.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else under public comment? Okay. This evening, we have Boy Scout Troop Two-Fifty-Six, and they are from Faith Presbyterian Church on Colonial Road. Do we have a spokesperson to come and tell us what you're doing here tonight? And we will be getting a picture after the meeting with you. So, if you can come to the podium and give us your name and your address?
Hi, I'm Ian Robinson, I'm from Troop Two-Fifty-Six, um, two-three-three Forest Hills Drive. I am a Troop Two-Fifty-Six at a Faith Emmanuel Presbyterian Church on Colonial Road. We're working on our citizenship in the Community Merit Badge, which is helping us to understand what is, what it means to be productive citizens in our local area. Attending this meeting is helping us to understand the role of local government in our community, and how people come together to make decisions that benefit our community. After attending this meeting, we will also be doing eight hours of community service for an organization in our community to, to complete the citizenship and the Community Merit Badge.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. We're glad that you're here. And after the meeting, you're going to get your questions together in email, and then I will share your questions with the board, and we'll get back to you. Okay?
We also expect you to solve all the problems of Hodges Heights before you leave here tonight.
Okay. Chairman and board member comments. Board members, do you have any comments? Mr. Zumas?
Briefly, Mr. Miller and I had an opportunity last week to testify in front of the Finance Committee at the House of Representatives. And basically, it came about as a result of some confusion that was on state laws in, addressing the tax situation for our firefighters that were receiving LoSAP money. And LoSAP stands for Lent the Service Awards Program. And some of them were being taxed, some of them were not. Caused a lot of confusion, little bit of a morale problem. So, Mr. Miller did some research and found out that the law was very vague, and it was subject to interpretation based upon who was preparing the tax forms. So, we went to our state rep, explained the situation. That was Joe Kerwin. He suggested we get Justin Fleming involved, which he was more than happy to help out. We drafted some legislation, went through a number of different committees, took probably at least a year at this point. And bottom line is, there is a bill that's being presented. I think they're voting on it this week. They're going to clarify the regulation that makes it so that it's clear, that it's non-taxable. And that'll be a, a good thing for our firefighters. So, just, Mr. Miller, if there's anything you care to add?
Well said, Supervisor Nmus. I would, I would just, I would just say that in relation to the, the efforts from Representative Fleming and Kerwin, certainly was great to have that bipartisan effort for them to come together on this, because obviously, the volunteer service is, is very paramount for success within our community. You know, we've been able to have that be a prominent service to the citizens for now, I think, eighty years, and the, the millions and millions in tax dollars that, that has saved the community, and to know that there's a, a strong, safe combination of three volunteer groups. And this was something small, I think, we felt we could do to kind of help satisfy assisting that group as, as best we could.
And I'm sure the firemen appreciate it. Thank you guys for doing that.
Assuming the bill passes.
Yeah. Anybody else? Last evening, Mr. Zumas and myself were delegates from the Township Board here. We attended the Council of Government meeting, and that's held in Hampton Township. And that takes in Perry County, York County, Cumberland County, Dauphin County, and Lebanon County. So, it's supervisors, we get together. We had two speakers last night, and we try to collaborate with the other counties and brainstorm is what we do. So, it's a good way to work with your other municipalities and get to meet other people from the other municipality. Okay, manager's report. Mr. Gotchaw?
Yes, Madam Chair. Hold on, folks. I do have one item.
Oh, my gosh.
This evening, so, hang with me. It's real quick. So, in response to some public comment from a number of weeks ago, staff, Mr. Miller here, in conjunction with the Township Solid Waste Hauler, Penn Waste, we are working to implement an emergency plan for remediating some storm-related woody waste issues in response to any sort of storm that may come about, wind, snow, those sorts of things. So, more, more to come on that as we have details. But again, that's, that's an emergency plan that we're looking to have in place in the event of storms, that we can have some sites available for folks to drop off their storm-related woody waste. So, that is all I have. So, thank, big, big shout out to, and thanks to Penn Waste for helping us out on that.
And with that said, Penn Waste does pick up our yard waste, and they usually were picking it up every other week. Starting in April, they will be picking up every week. So, if you're listening on the TV, your yard waste, starting in April, will be picked up every week.
And Mr. Miller, if you're sitting there thinking nobody ever listens or hears what you have to say, this is proof otherwise.
No, I had, I had feedback, actually.
All right.
Okay.
Very pleased. Thank you.
We try to please. Okay. Old business. We have action to adopt Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Four-Oh-One, authorizing the renewal and execution of a cable franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As presented two weeks ago to the board, and it's an initial presentation as an ordinance, we have before you for vote tonight, the five-year franchise agreement with Verizon. We've had a longstanding agreement with them for some time. As we had discussed two weeks ago, just major provisions, the franchise fee remains the same. We do have a nice PEG grant coming through to help investment in some of our public broadcasting that we have for our citizens. And the duration of the agreement is half the time of which it normally is, ten years to five years. Certainly entertain any other questions the board would have.
Board have any questions? Do I have any questions from the public? Okay. With that said, do I have a motion to adopt Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Four-Oh-One?
So moved.
I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. New business. Presentation and adoption of the Conway Track Park Master Plan. We have Ann Yost tonight from YSM Landscape Architects, and alongside of her is Rachel Scott. Rachel is our Director of Parks and Recreation in Lower Paxton Township.
There we go. All right. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Ann Yost. I'm a landscape architect, and I've been working with Rachel and a subcommittee, a study committee, to develop a master plan for the Conway Track. Conway Track is an eight-point-two-three acre site on Conway Road at the intersection of Conway and Nys Road. Our process, we worked with the study committee to set goals, and of course, we went out and looked at the site, tried to assess needs in the community. Again, this did relate to the Hodges Heights Park to a certain degree, so we considered some of the facilities that were at that site, did some research, and ultimately began a design process by exploring conceptual alternative designs for the site.
If I could just have a minute, could you talk into the mic, because we're on TV, and they need to hear you at home?
Right, I forgot.
Thank you.
We, we developed conceptual alternatives for the site. In that process, really, we're trying to force different decisions by looking at different ways to develop the site. Ultimately, the committee reviewed those and made recommendations. From that, we did a pre-final plan. Because the site had some dual roles in the, in the community, in the township, in terms of a site for fill, for sewer projects, we did a conceptual grading plan, then finalized the plan, and began the process of looking at cost estimates. So, just real quickly, this is the site, again, eight-point-two-three acres. It is a slope site, and we were provided a grading plan, how fill will be placed there. So, we tried to work to those ultimate grades. The square off to the side in the bottom left is the size of one acre, just for reference, and the north arrow shows pointing straight up. Nys Road is to the right, and Conway is to the top of the sheet. The grading plan, or the grades of the existing site are shown here. It's kind of a heat map. The steeper the grade, the redder the, the illustration. So, it's a relatively flat site as you enter it, off of Conway where the green area is, and then we get up to, and, and those slopes are zero to five percent, and then it, as it gets to the dark, dark orange or red-orange, we're at over twenty-five percent slope. So, you can see where the slope is. And that's critical as, when you're working on park design, it will ultimately be a public feature, a public asset, and as such, it needs to meet the ADA. So, the American with Disabilities Act says that for a trail to be an accessible route to get people from a parking space to a facility, and that could be any facility in a park, we really don't want to exceed five percent slope. So, you can see what we had to work with there. And then, just real quickly, we looked at a couple different configurations of how the site could be developed. Generally, the program was pickleball courts, basketball courts, playground, open space for informal play, picnic facilities, and then parking and trails. So, that, that was agreed upon pretty readily as the program for the site. And ultimately, we developed a, a plan like this. This was the pre-final plan, and you could see, we have twenty-seven or twenty-nine parking spaces parallel to Conway Road, one and a half basketball courts, a, a large open lawn area, and then to the bottom of the lawn area to the south is an age segregated playground, so an area for tots, and then a separate area for youth, a Gaga pit, a small pavilion, and some plaza space for people, caregivers to sit and enjoy watching children in the play area. As we move around counterclockwise, the blue rectangle is a picnic pavilion. There's some cornhole toss games there, some pavement games. And then, a little further north, we have three pickleball courts. At the corner of the parking, just above the pickleball courts, is kind of an orientation space that would have a sign, probably a trash can, and an enclosure for a, a port-a-john. And adjacent to that are handicap spaces. So, this was the pre-final plan. The next step was to do grading. And just by reference, the two, the two entrances, there is a differential on the grade of the road of twenty-two feet between those two entrances. As we developed the grading plan, and it's, it's gray, it's hard to see, but there are grades there, we, we went through this process of grading the site and working to those ADA parameters. We ultimately recommended a change that was put in front of the study committee and, and accepted, that instead of the two entrances, we could achieve the goals of the site better if we came in in a central entrance, and we could keep the site flatter and actually have more fill placed on the site, which was a secondary goal. So, the design modified a little between pre-final and final, but the program is exactly the same. We still have twenty-nine spaces. We still have one and a half basketball courts. And in, in this rendition of the basketball courts, we're able to put bleachers on the west side of the large court, which is an added bonus. And everything else is primarily the same. We did add meadow grasses on the steep slopes for stormwater benefit, infiltration benefit. And then, just below the pavilion, you see, we've added an area for stormwater BMPs. And that's something I think HRG is beginning to think about what they might be. We've just left space for that. So, that is, I believe, the final plan I have to show. Well, I did a blow up, just so it's a little easier to see. The two orange areas are the tot lot and the youth playground, and the six-sided element just below the youth playground is the Gaga pit. Small pavilion between the playgrounds is some, like, a two-table pavilion. It's not big. And then, the other building pavilion is probably an eight-table pavilion, six or eight. And I believe there is a small one-table pavilion up by the pickleball courts, just to provide shade and a place to wait. They tend to be very popular. And that's it.
Board members, do you have any comments, questions?
I do. So, Conway Park is going to be a community park?
It is a park for the community, but it is typically, it would be classified as a neighborhood park based on its size. And it's a classification just based on size. So, typically, a park less than ten or fifteen acres is considered a neighborhood park.
Okay. So, do you have any, you said, how many parking spaces? Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. So, it is a, there's no opportunity for a baseball team to play over there?
No, we really don't have the size to do that.
Okay.
We don't. And one thing I forgot to mention is, we are extending a sidewalk on the south side of Conway up to the intersection, and then suggesting crosswalks on all four corners of the intersection. I don't know what road that is up there. No, Conway N. That road up there. Creek Run Road.
Kendall Oaks.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have any questions from the public for Ms. Yost? Rachel, do you have anything you need to add? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the Conway Track Park Master Plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yost. We appreciate it, all that you've done with the, the parks.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is action to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four-Oh-Five, authorizing the electronic submission of requests to DCNR for a C-two- submission of requests to DCNR for a C2P2 grant for the Conway Park Development Project. Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. Let's see here. So I am looking to apply for the C2P2 grant through DCNR. This grant generally awards up to $600,000 with a 50-50 match. Our focus for the Conway Park will be focusing on the parking lot and the pickleball courts since we feel and recognize that we do not have any dedicated pickleball courts in the township at this time. So this grant is due April 1st. We will not find out till mid-January of 2025, but I request the submittal of the resolution 2024-05.
Okay. We've had good luck with DCNR at the Brightville Park.
Correct.
Yes, yes. Board members, any questions for Mrs. Scott? Any questions from the public?
Rachel, once that grant request have to be in?
April 1st.
April 1st.
April 1st.
First.
Thank you.
Rachel, what's the likelihood of us being awarded that grant? Do you have any feeling? What's happened in the past?
Um, I think Ann might, not to put you on the spot, but you might have a better feel for that.
I've met with many communities, and one of the things you need to do, I'm sorry, I, I've worked with many communities on these grants, one of the things you need to do for each project you submit is meet with your local DCNR rep, and they kind of guide you as you go ahead. And what I'm hearing this year from each rep I meet with is it's going to be a very competitive round. Following all the ARPA money, they had, they funded everybody. I mean, there was rounds where they funded everything, and that, since then, it's just getting more and more competitive because the dollars aren't, aren't there the way they were.
Who are we competing against?
Every other community, like.
Lots of municipalities all over.
Right. It's boroughs and townships, so throughout the, the area. And we're put into regions, this is a very competitive region as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you. And I have met with our representative and gone over the plan, so she is fully aware.
Well, just think positive. Okay. With that said, do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-05?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Yost. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, adoption of resolution 2024-06 authorizing the submission of a funding request to the Pennsylvania Department of Health Walk Works Program. Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, you know, as you, as you're aware, we typically like to bring these things to workshop, just to give the board a heads up, but actually, with all three of these resolutions, all dealing with grants, we are up against a bit of a timeline crunch, so apologies for the truncated schedule here, but resolution 20-20, 2024-06 authorizes the submission of a funding request to Pennsylvania Department of Health's Walk Works Program in the amount of up to $25,000 with a 50% local match, of which will be drawn from the township's CDBG annual allocations. This program would allow the township to procure the consultant for the purpose of producing an active transportation plan, which would identify recommendations for bicycle, pedestrian, and greenway connections with and between various township and county infrastructure. A number of the issues that were addressed this evening relating to Hodges Heights and other areas of the township would be part of this planning process, so that's very exciting. It would also help our Planning Commission, CDBG Program, Greenway Committee, and others in prioritizing multimodal transportation proposals and projects. So with all that said, this resolution is before the board this evening and prepared for adoption. And as I may add, just to clarify, in relation to Ms. Thompson's question relative to grants, as the board is aware, the township has had a very good working relationship with our senator and our representatives, and we have regular and ongoing meetings with them to, to seek their support on programs, and these will certainly be among those requests.
Board members, any comments? What is the funding that, what is the request? What are we funding? Is there an amount?
We have an identified amount, but it's, it's up to $25,000. We're, we're going to be seeking some, some soft quotes from consultants to help us guide that actual grant request, but up to $25,000.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-06?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, action to adopt resolution 2024-04, authorizing the submission of a federal burn justice grant request to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, Madam Chair. Resolution 2024-04 authorizes the submission of a funding request to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in the amount of $191,635.82 for the hiring, which includes salary benefits and some startup equipment for a period of two years, for the hiring of an additional mental health co-responder within the Bureau of Police, and that would bring our compliment to two of those individuals who specifically deal day in and day out, full-time, on assisting our police department on mental health-related calls. As noted by the Director of Public Safety, Lower Paxton does unfortunately have the highest call volume in the county with regard to mental health-related issues, and this, this would certainly help the department in, in handling each one of those calls. So with all that said, the resolution is prepared for board adoption at this point.
Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Gutschall?
An $0.82.
That's, gotta get that $0.82.
Right down to the penny. Okay. Alrighty. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024-04?
So moved.
That's been very successful for us in the past.
We've, we've done well, and like Mr. Gutschall said, we definitely have a high call volume. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action to award a contract for tree cutting in the PC 3E Mini Basin Project area. Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the township held a public bid opening on February 29th for a contract for tree cutting and stump and root grinding within the sewers' PC 3E Mini Basin Project area. Two contractors placed a bid on this project. At this time, staff recommends awarding this contract to Stoner's Tree Service Incorporated, the lowest qualified bidder at an amount of $28,025, subject to solicitor review, execution of the agreement, and receipt of all appropriate documentation.
And we've used them many times, we've never had any issues, so.
Correct.
Okay. Board members, any comments, questions?
Where is this mini basin located?
Paxton Creek 3E.
I'd have to get back to you on the exact location.
Yeah. PC stands for Paxton Creek, so it's probably on the north side.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to go to the podium.
Maybe Mr. Miller can help us out.
My question was the same as yours as to where it's located, because last year, about a year and a half, there's a lot of people are throwing trash you can't see at the end of Goose Valley Road at Colonial down over the hill. And the township has a sewer right-of-way. How you get to it, I don't know, but it must come, come in off of someone's property on Woodcrest. But that, it's all overgrown, you can't get in. I want to get that stuff out of there. I'm seeing some people to my left that might help me out with it.
There we go. Volunteer.
Volunteers, perhaps. But there was a lot of debris, I mean, bottles, beer stuff. I mean, somebody's doing it regularly, it'd be a good place for a little camera. But I just wonder if it's the same one. If not, it is one to look at, because it is overgrown, there's phone lines, the trees are on them, but I don't think the tree guys, the, the phone guys can get in. If they can't get in over the, I think they did use, what I looked into was a sewer right-of-way, and it's kind of not there. So in case you need to get there to fix something, you'd have to clear it anyway. So if they're the same, that's great. I'm just curious where it is.
Yeah, I'm not. Did you text Mr. Weaver?
Thank you.
Mr. Gutschall.
I was just trying to pull it up on a map here, but.
Okay.
Should I make a motion while we're waiting?
Well, I think if Pamela wants to know where it's at.
It's quite a large area. Yeah, it looks like it's north of, um, north of 81, up to, where is it? Up to approximately Bluegrass Avenue, extending west up to, looks like Killington, Janelle, Saddle Brook, in that, in that region.
Yeah, because Janelle's off of Goose Valley.
It is.
But yeah, Bluegrass is over.
In, in Lingle.
That's in, that's off a mountain road.
Right. It's up in the blues.
Because Janelle's Goose Valley Lakes.
Yeah, Janelle's just out, it, it, it terminates right before Janelle.
Oh, okay.
In that neighborhood.
So it's off of Goose Valley, then?
Yes.
Okay. Goose Valley, okay. Do you know where Goose Valley is?
Mm-hmm. I do.
Okay, okay. All right. Do I have a motion to award the contract for the tree cutting in the PC 3E Mini Basin Project area?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a action to award an HVAC upgrades contract for the Lower Paxton Township Sewer Operations Facility. Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, ma'am, members of the board, the township held a public bid opening on March 14th for a project that will replace two HVAC rooftop units on the sewer operations facility building. One contractor placed a bid on this project, and at this time, the engineer and staff have recommended awarding this contract to Spots Brothers Incorporated, the lowest qualified bidder, at an amount of $37,400, subject, of course, to solicitor review and execution of the agreement and the receipt of all appropriate documentation.
Have we ever used them before? I'm not.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
Yes, we have, yep. Actually, it's quite, quite interesting, about, I think, four years ago to this day exactly, we had Spots Brothers do two HVAC unit replacements on, might have been the, was it the Friendship Center?
Was that the Friendship Center?
Might have been the Friendship Center, but like, to, to this day, it's quite, quite astonishing.
Okay. How, I'm just trying to think, how old is the sewer operations facility?
I'm not sure. I think, I think Mr. Weaver might have told me that these, these units are 20, 20 years old.
Okay. That's probably about right. It might be like 22, 24 years.
Like that.
Okay. Just curious. Okay. Board members, any questions? Comments? Do I have a motion to award an HVAC upgrades contract for the LPT Sewer Operations Facility?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have subdivision and land development improvement guarantees. Just waiting, we have four of them. 4301 Union Deposit Road, Amber Fields, Blue Ridge Village Phase 3, CD East Middle School Track. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Payment of bills. Okay. Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority, do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to pay the ARPA mentioned bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Gutschall, Mr. Miller? Good to go? Okay. With that said, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and we'll get a picture up here in front of the Diaz with the Boy Scouts.